All right, it's nine o'clock, time to call the meeting to order, special session. And on our work session, item A, we have a discussion with Montgomery County Commissioner, Larry McManus. Larry, welcome to the city work session today. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Larry, do you have an opening statement of remarks you want to make at this time?
Not really, I wasn't really prepared to make any statements, just here to listen and learn and see what you guys had proposed, or if you had any thoughts or anything that we could help you with, or not real sure what's going on today, so I'm here to get school.
To get school, okay, okay. Leonard, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
Well, we've discussed quite a time back about the possibility of cooperating and sharing services with other municipalities and also with the county, and we've had some activity, but just wanted to go commissioners to commission and get ideas and see where we can, because one of the things we keep hearing is the tax rate in Montgomery County, which both is affected by city taxes and county taxes, so the easiest way it's, would appear to me, is if we can cut duplications of services or efforts that we can consolidate into one. You know, you look at the population of Montgomery County, we're not much more than a moderate-sized city, thirty-six, thirty-eight thousand people, so, you know, cities of that size operate with one entity, but then you look at Montgomery County and we've got basically five entities, and there's some duplication of services in each one on a smaller scale, so what are some ways that we can come together and consolidate an effort and share, instead of each of us doing the same thing five times? How can we lean on the county to do something that we're doing that you could do more efficient, how can the county lean on the cities to do something that five of us are doing that you're doing also? So how can we come together to reduce costs overall? So that was kind of the premise of what we're doing today, is hoping to initiate that conversation. Not saying we have answers, but, you know, sometimes the solutions come from brainstorming, and brainstorming isn't to weed out unlikely solutions, but to lay out everything on the table to find out exactly what will work and what won't work, instead of, we haven't done it that way in the past, so we know it won't work because we've never done it that way. So it's really to look at ways that we can come together to serve the citizens more efficiently.
Sure.
You know, one way we've cooperated in the past, when our tiger mower was broke, the county was able to come in and take care of that for us, so, you know, even with some of your equipment, there are areas that we can aid you, or can you aid us? I know Commissioner Rao had talked about centralized dispatch for the county, you know, now we're dispatching county and independents from one center, but separate, separate within the same, is that an area that can provide some consolidation to cut our overall costs? You know, how would that really pan out? And I know we're using the GIS systems are overlapping, we're relying on your information, I believe Kelly's giving you some of ours, but is an integrated GIS that, you know, total data entry into one entity, whether it be county, as it is now, or a department that we can all contribute, so that all the maps are done within, you know, our water lines, or, you know, is that a possibility? You know, just what are the limits and what areas are not going to be productive, but let's at least get some ideas out on the table, so we can start exploring. We've done a lot of talking, but we haven't seen much resolve.
Yeah, Larry, I got to sit in on one of the earlier meetings when Brooke Carroll and Fred Grass and committee was put together, and at that time you were looking, the group was looking at ways of cost-sharing and looking at inter-local cooperation between the groups, to where instead of, like Leonard had mentioned, instead of looking at different entities, looking at, at all, all in the same, we're all in the same position, the main thing we have in common is we're all taking tax dollars from the, from the same people, whether you're county, or whether you're Cherryville, or Coffeyville, or Independence, or Caney, or anywhere in here, the end result is we're taking the dollars from the taxpayer, that's the end result. And I know the GIS system has been a benefit to this city, and I'm assuming there are other cities that are taking advantage of the county providing that service.
Oh, yeah.
And then one of the other things we did was the wholesale purchase of asphalt in our road work, that was another area, but besides those two things, was there anything else that had come out of those meetings that maybe I'm unaware of, but the group is unaware of, that where we were able to collaborate and come up with some cost savings, or found a better process where we could cooperate and still, and still get work done? I don't know whether there was anything you could add to that or not.
Well, it's been so long since we've had a meeting, you know, things have kind of went by the wayside, but, you know, I think we talked early on about some of our heavy equipment that we have, you know, sharing that, you know, we have nine graders, and I don't think you guys even, do you have graders anymore? I don't think you do.
Yeah, one.
Huh?
Yeah, one.
One, okay.
Yeah. Back in 2014, after we were repelled, KI did come in to mowing for us, but, I mean, we had to pay, it's a hundred dollars a day, and they did some home planting in January, I got one, Deller Brothers, and that was named after them. So, and I know that you don't want to turn much of your equipment, that, so, I mean, there is a cost associated.
Yeah, and the thing with, we need to look at all our costs and that, too, with equipment, I know we got our tiger mower, and I noticed right after we got it in appropriations, there was an eight or nine hundred dollar repair bill. So, you know, there's, both ways, we need to look at our overall costs, some will work, some won't work, and, yeah, the, we'll just have to look at the overall cost compared to equipment, maintenance, liability for us, and really to see if it's going to be feasible. At this time, I think we need to throw ideas out and then evaluate each one, get the input on what's worked in the past, what hasn't, some obstacles, that could be some things to...
Like you say, an obstacle is, when you, you know, when they go mowing, so you guys, you guys are busy, too, so, you know, it's all ahead, would have to be, of course, maybe, you know, that's why we feel easier when we have our own.
Right, there's definitely some advantages to having your own equipment, and that's some of the things that, you know, is kind of, today, I think we're throwing out ideas, and then we come to the, to evaluating, and you got a point that we need to look at, at the sequencing, are you going to be tied up when we need that work done? And if, you know, if it's at that critical time that we need mowing, for example, if your guys are tied up mowing and can't do ours, that ours gets out of the way, or vice versa, in whatever we're looking at, then, you know, that needs to be taken into consideration, but looking initially at the thing, the thing with, you know, another area, I see with engineering, right now, we all just depend upon consultants for their advice and their direction, that it makes it hard to get our own interests protected, so, you know, is engineering a way that neither, none of the cities can afford their own engineer, but is there a way to cooperate, to have a staff engineer that would write specs for your asphalt, your milling and overlays, that could do ours, could do Coffeyville, or Caney, or Cherryville? You know, there's some areas there that, you know, I guess I look back at the projects with design-build, you're losing your eyes and your interest to the money, because it all goes into the contractor, the execution of project, and when you only have a consultant, sometimes your interests get lost for the convenience of the work and for expediting the work, you don't have the knowledge in-house to oversee and understand the workings of the contract, so you're kind of like a boat without oars on a lake, it depends which ways of wind blowing is where you're going to get good representation or bad representation, you're at the mercy of your consultant, instead of having total independent eyes that will say, no, that's not what we talked about, that's not acceptable, and, you know, sometimes it's just a little extra effort that guarantees our, our project.
There's obviously pros and cons to consolidation, and you have to look for those efficiencies if you can. The one thing you have to be careful of is level of service, that you don't degrade your level of service to your citizens by whatever consolidation you're talking about. Often you see, especially if it's a larger city and a much smaller city, you know, that smaller city's getting more benefit out than the larger city, the larger city's actually losing perhaps, and, but that's what you have to do, cost benefit, look at all, all the options, I know you mentioned dispatch, and I think they looked at dispatch consolidation several years ago here, if I'm not mistaken, that's what I've heard, anyway, and it was, it get quite expensive, of course, and geographically, we're spread out, of course, four cities and twenty, twenty miles apart, pretty much, but, but dispatch, that's not really an issue distance, you know, with the technology nowadays, but you have to look at each one, like you say, we're not, we're not going to go through the pros and cons of each one today, but I'm just saying, watch your level of service, you want to, you want to hopefully improve it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the thing that we, you do in an evaluation, first you got to look at your options on the table, and, you know, you, you look at the distance, Coffeyville is dispatching for Caney, we're dispatching for Cherryville, the county and the city of Independence are dispatching from the same room, so, you know, you start seeing some of the obstacles that we talked about a few years ago, just with the county and the city sitting in the same room but doing two separate things, you know, is there some area, and, you know, that's where we're looking at starting a list to start evaluating. One thing you do with brainstorming is you don't consider the negatives of brainstorming, you look at the options, and then you start evaluating each option independently, because a lot of times, you know, it's like going on a trip, you got two routes to go, you got to make a decision where to start, and sometimes you start out and you find out that's not the best route, and you, you turn and you go somewhat, pick another route, but you got to make the decision to start and to go, and brainstorming is just, here's some ideas, you know, let's not consider why it won't work, let's consider options, and then let's sit down and evaluate each one, look at the pros, the cons, you know, you need to do a cost analysis, you need to do the effectiveness, and then you find out at the end, when you get all the facts together, whether it's worth pursuing or not, but, you know, sometimes we got to let go to go forward, and we need input to get to that, to get to that point, and, you know, so, the things we talk about now is not, this is what we're going to do, here it is, I'll hand you the list, it's like, what areas can we consider, then let's see where we go from there, you know, let's look at the advantages and the disadvantages.
I might suggest we, you know, that committee you mentioned, you know, we had the four cities, I might suggest this, that was made up of city staffs from each of the entities, like I say, city managers from each entity, and, and other staff, public works, utilities, everything, we came to the table, it was ongoing when I got here, and had several meetings, one, we'd meet once a month, and we came up with some, some things, and I remember there was a presentation, kind of an update on what the committee had looked at over time, so I might suggest, again, because that's, that's where we can start the brainstorming from the staff level, to talk about these ideas and others, whatever comes up, but that's, I mean, that was the whole point of that committee, was to, to look at things like this, so I'd suggest we initiate that again.
I think that would be fine, I think it needs to be on the commission level, too, like Commissioner McManus said, it hadn't been in a long time, very little, I think one presentation came back to this commission.
Right.
None of the commissioners were involved to know what was going on with the committee, and sometimes it's stalemates, and, you know, the thing we keep hearing is we've got to do something about our, our taxes, so, you know, this is one area that we can start talking and looking at, I don't know what the other commissioners here feel like, I know I've done a lot of talking, so...
The, is there not one county in Kansas, is it Riley, or is it Shawnee that has one dispatch, and there one county in Kansas that has gone to that?
Riley County has...
Is it Riley or Shawnee, I don't remember, it's one of the two.
There's a number of central dispatches throughout the state.
But, but there's one that, it's central dispatch, it covers every, everything in the county?
There's a number of those. Riley, you're thinking of Riley County, Riley County is the only county police department in the state that's consolidated.
Okay, okay.
There's, I think there's a hundred and, I want to say somewhere around a hundred and fourteen dispatches throughout the state, PSAPS, that's PSAPS, there's a lot of dispatches, but that's actual PSAPS. Of those, I believe seventy are run by a police department or a sheriff's office, and then the rest are consolidated, and so, I'm actually gathering informa, I'm in the information gathering stage right now on just a feasibility, look at consolidated dispatch that considers everything, and so, I'm gathering data right now and, and working on developing partners to explore that, it's going to be, it's going to be an all-encompassing thing that considers all the different things that you have to, to look at when you start talking about consolidated dispatch, that is an exceedingly complicated process, I've, my former agency went through it, and they now dispatch for fourteen or eighteen different entities, and one of the counties that I sat in, also, that our city sat in, also went through it, probably learned more about what not to do.
Yeah.
And I know Cali County's had some struggles with that, I believe, so, you know, we're, we're just going to reach out to everybody that's been through it, make sure that we cover all of our bases, and make a solid recommendation, it's probably going to, my goal is to have that done in 2019, so it's going to be a long, it's going to be a long look before we have any answers on that.
I mean, that's been my most recent experience in my last city, we had, the city did not dispatch, it was, it was a county-wide dispatch, except for the two major cities in the county, they did their own dispatch, but the rest of the cities in the county, and that, that were centralized dispatch, a separate board, separate entity, wasn't, it wasn't a governmental entity, other than, I mean, it was a special form of government, form of, it was a special board that you could set up, anyway, so we did dispatch for nine jurisdictions, almost three hundred thousand people, we always tried to get the larger cities to join in, consolidate with us, but they never would, they wanted their own control, but they were, but that's their choice, anyway, so that's my experience, and I was actually on the board of that, so I know consolidation can work well in that area, if it's, you know, it's done right, if you, you know, but moving there, getting there, and the cost of that, what that would entail, that's what you have to eventually look, look at, let's say.
Yeah, and a separate-run entity seems really practical where everybody contributes to the operation of it, and it's not under the jurisdiction of one, but each entity has input and representation, but, you know, and that's part of the plan, I guess you'll look at, is most of them are funded by, as a, a separate entity, that taxes will be generated for the support of that, and Riley County Police Department, I think, is a separate taxing entity in, in Riley County, which they consume, I think, the largest portion of the mill levy, and I know they've operated since sometime in the seventies, or maybe before they consolidated.
I think they have a board, I think they actually have a board that manages, kind of like what he's saying for a centralized dispatch.
Right.
There's a, as you know, the option, there's just a whole litany of, of directions you can take, anything. Some of the things that I've discovered, and, and I don't know if we want to drill down too far into it today, but some of the things that I've discovered that we have to consider whenever I start interviewing people and talking to staff, talking to other agencies, talking to people who've been through it, there's a lot that goes on in our dispatch, in every dispatch, that would not be covered in a consolidated dispatch setting, so, you know, like data entry into the CGIS database, the crime, criminal justice databases, so warrants, stolen items, answering the phones, who's going to answer the phone at the police department, you know? If you call, if you call Cali County, if you call the phone number that's listed on the police department webpage, you get, you get the Cali County Dispatch, they will not connect you to Cali, to, when I was trying to get ahold of the Arkansas, Arkansas City Police Department, they will not connect you to them, they'll give you a phone number, and so then you got to call them yourself, so, you know, what's the subscription rate going to be, what's the level of service going to be, who's going to do your data entry, who's going to answer your phones, who's going to take your walk-ins, that's just scratching the surface, so there's a whole lot, you know, I believe in, in being conservative with tax dollars as well, I just don't want to put us on a path of good, that started out with good intentions, and then the law of unintended consequences caught up with us, so that's why we're trying to take a good thorough look at it, and make a long-term, you know, make, make a decision based off of a lot of research, so that we, whatever we do, it does serve the community the best.
Yeah, I, I think the advantage there is not only looking at the community, but the county, it's kind of like, I see, you want to build a house, I can look through a magazine that's full of house plans, and I can pick one, and I can build that house, but it's not going to fit me, because I didn't consider my lifestyle, I didn't consider my needs, and that's what you're, I hear you saying similar, that if you just take an example and do it, and you don't take into consideration what you're doing, you get a program that doesn't work, and one thing you do at this point, like, taking the examples you have to examine, but then start adding in the points that you brought out that we do different, because it's obvious that what you feel you're doing different than they are is very critical to the performance of, of your job and your service, well then you take that to the other communities, and they, and you say, this is what we're doing, this is how it's improving our response and our records and our performance, they can do the same thing, bringing that in, and you get a much better performing model at the end, and now, instead of you being a floor plan out of a magazine, that everybody has one, and you complain that it doesn't fit your lifestyle, now you become the leader to show what it can be, and how you've taken something, you've adapted it to your own needs, and it's performing better than what the examples were, and then others can come and build off of what you've established, and you keep it flexible, so, yeah, I think there's a lot of things that you've brought to the tables here in your analysis and recording crime data, that we sure would want to sacrifice in dispatch, and the, the issues of who's going to answer the phone and how that, by identifying those, you lessen the chance of getting into a program and finding out, we didn't cover that, and this, that's the advantage of looking at the other examples and coming in at this point with a clean slate, and not trying to duplicate, but to solve your problem and solve the problems of others, whether it be dispatch, engineering, GSI, asphalt purchasing, it's the same principle that you take forward, and you analyze, analyze each cost, and come together for a solution, or it stays the same.
Yeah, you're, you're right that you need to look at, you need to tailor it to your area, and, you know, places where it's been successful, they have a board, and they have input, and people that can control, that have, that have some control over the, over the organization when it comes to central dispatch, you would have a, you know, there's one model where you have a director, and that director reports to the board, like what, what Craig said on, and that, that seems to be a good model, I've seen a model where it was just run by the city, and everybody just paid a subscription fee to the city, and there was another, just another department head, and on the city that ran the central dispatch, so, you know, and then you have no control.
Yeah.
And I think the biggest concern that I have is, I don't want, as Craig said, I don't want level of service to, to be degraded, and so, whatever happens, there needs to be a mechanism in there that each community, each, each taxpaying entity, whether that be county citizen, or a city citizen around the county, and other towns, you know, they, they need to have a representative that, that makes sure that, that the level of service doesn't diminish if that's, if it, if that is a feasible route for us to go, so it's, again, it's like you said, you can't just pull a plan off the, out of a book and start rolling on it, it's got to be built for us, so we got to, we've got to look at it, we've got to look and, and make an honest comparison to what we do now, and this applies across the board to the different things you're talking about there, and just make sure that we don't, we don't do something that takes us down the path of unintended consequences, so I have seen, I have seen a negative outcome from that.
Yeah, the models you talk about, I mentioned like the last committee, board that worked well for some cities, but there were two cities, that they, as I said, they, they wanted to run theirs their way, and they didn't want to give that up, and they were larger jurisdictions than the rest of the cities, you know, usually by double, not to say the other cities weren't large, and we had fifty, sixty thousand population cities, and we were all contiguous as well, we weren't spread out, other than, it was the county, but you have those issues, and even my first city, if you were at First Friday, I talked about my first city, I spent a week in Central I spent a, a week in central dispatch for the city of Rochester, which dispatched for the whole county. Eight hundred thousand people, I came here with like nine, ten jurisdictions. And it was run by the city, city staff, city employees, and the rest of the count, jurisdictions contributed. Lots of problems, as I remember. I mean, it worked, it worked, but the jurisdictions, again, they wanted kinda their specialties, how they run things differently, and they were always complaining to the dispatch. In fact, the dis- supervisory of that, of the dispatch changed about every year. It was a, it was a tough animal. Even in, actually, my last city, when I was on the board, we had, we had those same, we'd have issues, like, well, our city, we're gonna go with this program for our emergency alert system. Other cities wanted to use this, other cities wanted to use. So, the dispatch, actually, dispatchers had to know when, when it's a call from this city, they had to respond this way. If it's a call from this city, they had to respond differently. So, you get, you run into those issues, but.
That, that brings out a good point, too, that in anything we consider, we've gotta be adaptable to work for the betterment of the people. And, you know, it's, no matter what we do, we want to improve. If we're doing a street, we want the street better than when we started. You know, if we're putting in a new sewer line, we want the stuff to flow better than it did before. You know, we don't want to put in a twelve-inch sewer line connecting to a four that goes to processing plant, 'cause it backs up enough without help. So, I think our primary goal is always in whatever we do, to improve and not go backwards. And I think the, the way we have to do it in, in each municipality and in the county, we gotta look, we want to improve everybody's quality of life, everybody benefit from an end. Because what if Coffeyville is doing something with their systems that's better than Independence? Do we want to stay where we are, because this is the way it is and this is the best for our people, when we could change and bring something that they're doing and to Independence to improve what we're doing? And vice versa. I think the main goal, whenever we look at this, is in the end, not to diminish the service, but to improve everybody, to prove the people living in the county that they get an improvement by our, our action. Not that now we're just drawing off the county, but that what we have to offer and by you servicing the city, that overall, everybody is improved, not getting less service. And that, like Mike mentioned, with the, the scheduling of the equipment, as an example. We don't want to start an agreement that is gonna take county employees away from servicing the county population to benefit us, and we don't want to agree with the county that's gonna reduce the service to our citizens from where they had before. And I think that's where, you know, I know we've talked a lot, particularly about, about dispatch, but above all, and no matter what we're looking at, our goal is to improve services to everybody. And it, and if possible, reduce the expense to everybody.
Another opportunity that we have utilized was, we have collaborated with that group. The last session, actually, we had was on the cybersecurity training. That was a three-day training that several of us participated in, and that was towards the end of the year last year. There have been some staff changes in some of the, the cities, so we're wanting to ramp those meetings back up. But part of that is, we've discussed several of these other items previously, and, you know, we need to make sure that we have an agenda of something to discuss so that we're not wasting, you know, anyone's time. It got to where we'd already discussed several of these things, and, you know, I would send out a notice, say, anybody have anything to discuss that we need to bring forward. So, you know, have, have, maybe having those items get in that direction from the commissions of, of what items you want us to look at would be helpful as well. And like I said, some of these things, like the equipment and things like that, we, we did discuss in quite a bit of conversation, if you remember Larry, and Robert was a big part of that. And went through all the pros and cons and have quite a bit of, of data on that. But that was just one of the items. We also did some purchasing. We had, like, presentations come down from Green Bush. We ended up saving quite a bit of money on buying a copier and things like that. So, I mean, it, it, it was more than just, you know, equipment and that kinda things. It was, you know, training, there's a lot of opportunities. And we, and from those meetings, I will say, we developed some relationships to where we are, we have a really good relationship with the county GIS. I know we have, our, our people have went down to Coffeyville and trained on, got some INCODE training down there of how they do some things. I, I visited with the GIS people in Coffeyville to see how, how they're doing some things that we had some challenges on, and it, it, we've had a raw, really some good outcomes that maybe you don't, you don't maybe necessarily see, but just, there were a lot of good things that came out of those meetings. But I think just getting a, a direction and an agenda, and then we'll get that back going, 'cause we do have some new administrators and managers that haven't participated.
Training is a, a good point to bring in, for everyone to benefit from one session instead of each having the same session and purchasing, too.
I appreciate Commissioner McManus being here this morning. I, I think I've been on city commission for about five years, and Leonard's been on even longer than that. And it seems like six or eight times a year, we say, man, I wish we could partner better with the county, because we, we're all in this together.
Sure.
If somebody's complaining about their property taxes, which hardly ever happens, right? But it's certainly to our advantage, too, if we can help the county save money. And I, I don't know how many miles of roads you guys have. I've, I've heard the, the figure, but it's a lot.
I can't even remember now, but it's, it's quite a bit, you know?
It is, it's a huge number, and, and that's one of our biggest problems, is we, you know, we don't have the budget to really take good care of our streets, so we keep thinking, is there some way we could partner more? I know we've done that recently with some asphalt purchases. I, I, my goal in having you here was just to let you know, we, we want to be good partners in any way we can. Being a consulting engineer my whole career, it used to be a lot of my friends were city engineers, and now it seems like cities and counties don't have their own engineering staff, which a previous city manager said, you just, there's just no way to afford that anymore. But, but it's like, well, I saw, I can't remember, a couple of years ago, we paid our consulting engineers $200,000 or something in one year. So, seems to me, if we can't find a way to have an engineer on staff, maybe we could partner with other cities in the county or with the county and, and, I don't know, somehow share an in-house engineer, because we, we've spent a fortune on engineering services. And just, I mean, I just wanna make sure the county knows that we want to be good partners in whatever, whatever way that shakes out. I know we've made some, some tremendous efforts to that. I appreciate all our city staff working in that area. But just wanted to let you know that that's, that's a goal of ours, of the city commission, to work with the county in whatever way makes sense.
Well, we've talked about it, too, about anything we can do to help the city. And, you know, I've, I've talked to Kelly a lot, got things done for her that, when she rubbed against a stone wall, you know, kinda knocked the walls down to get things taken care of for her, you know, we've partnered up that a way. It's kinda behind the scenes, people don't really realize that, but city and county have worked pretty good together. And that should be an ongoing thing. You know, the more we work together, I think, the better we do for the taxpayers. And that's, you know, the bottom line is taking care of them. Anytime we can reduce costs to the taxpayers and, and get the job done, is, is the direction we need to go, so. But anything we can do to further this along, you know, we're ready.
Appreciate that. I would not wanna trade places with you.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else? Larry, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for being here and sitting in on this. Let's move, if there's no more discussion on this, let's move to item B. I'm sorry.
Just to, so we don't just walk off and leave without a direction. I think we need to take a list, like Kelly's taken minutes, so she can get a list of what we've talked about ways, and come back and, and share it with us, get, get us copies, and then since, uh, Robert and Fred weren't able, get it to Larry, and he can get them copies to look over.
Yep.
Markup, if you think of any more, staff can also look and add, your staff can look and add, and then we can start developing a list as we bring in commissioners from Caney, Coffeyville, and Cherryville. We can kinda start the same thing, that we can get a direction. So, we'll know, you know, and, and then we can kinda do like strategic planning. Pick the top, most pressing, most relevant, and then proceed with, with a direction in each one. If we could get the list and share it and develop from there. That was all, Mayor.
Thank you, Leonard.
Thanks again, Larry.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry.
I gotta go get ready, go to Texas, so.
Have a great day.
Okay, next item on the work session is B, uh, street concerns. And I'm sure each of you gentlemen to the left and right of me hear, hear a lot from the public about street concerns, from past repairs that, that have not held up to standards, about repairs that haven't been made permanent. And I noticed here lately, we are making concrete repairs on some of the street projects, which is a big improvement. But I wanna know, what, what plan do we have concerning street repair? As far as potholes, as far as temporary repairs that we've made? And we've not been able to go back and make permanent repairs? And, and what the timeline is? Have we identified where these areas are and some of the most critical ones? And what's the plan going forward as to addressing those?
Next week they call up the rains, and the week after. One, one problem area in Eleventh and Maple, they patched it with hot asphalt last year. And there's constant water running in there. I don't know where it's coming from, but it's not gonna hold up. With the Maple, Market Maple, it's done hot patch. We got the last hot patch they were making last year. We just called them in a two-day window, did that. That still has a little water coming from somewhere, I don't know, nowhere. That's what we're doing. The ones nearby Walgreen, those will be done with concrete. Until something can be done with those two blocks. We looked at a clink or a geometric there. It's not come to pass yet, so that is a bad area, the base is still on that.
Can I, can I jump back to the Eleventh and Maple for a minute? Since that's, I drive around the block to go to Brahms rather than go through that intersection. And as you just said, and others have said, it's always underwater, are we?
Well, the other day, it hadn't rained for a week.
Right.
It's full of water.
So, everybody assumes we have a leaking water line. Is there any way to ascertain?
I think.
Terry's shaking his head no.
No, we've looked at that.
Terry's checked that out.
There is not a water line within a half a block of that intersection.
Wow, okay, that's really good.
And you test it for chlorine, and there's nothing in the water that would.
So, there's just a natural source of water there? We need some pump.
I don't know, one of those houses has a saltwater that's coming out there.
Any, any problem can be solved if you have enough money.
Right. So, every time you, I mean, I've lived here six years, every time that's repaired, which has been done several times, it's no time at all, it's bad again. So, is there any way to repair it with, to deal with the water?
Well, it would be costly, but you could cut that, close the road, cut the pan out, which is what I call the, where the water runs, concrete, concrete is gonna stay.
Yeah, the water's still gotta go somewhere then.
Water on that road, that flows to the west, down the thirteen.
With concrete, it'd be easier to control the flow.
Right.
Across the, the intersection to make sure that it drains, you can.
To get a valley.
Yeah, you can get the elevation in the two gutters, and even maybe go back a little ways if you need to do your tie-in. But discovering the source, if it's groundwater, there's not a storm drain in that area that you can't put an underground. Drain. So, the only thing is, is your, your concrete.
Everything from Maine flows clear down at thirteen. There's nothing that flows to the south of it.
Yeah, asphalt's not gonna, not gonna stay. It worked great after you put the hot down, but. I think we had the combination of severe cold weather and the moisture standing there. It just ate the, the asphalt out, and the next step is.
And it's brick underneath, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we have really no base under there anymore, probably.
Yeah, you know, with the character of the, the brick works good, because each one is individual. It doesn't crack, it moves a little. There's two layers of brick, and then the rock base. You go with concrete, you're gonna need to get some depth and, and go down and reestablish your base rock, or the concrete'll break out, too. But with the concrete, if the water is coming from the curb and running down across, you can keep it flowing and not stand there. It'd be easier to maintain your grade across it.
That's, that's the permanent fix that I would do for.
Yeah.
As far as the, I know there's been a lot of streets that have been turned in, where we've gone and filled potholes with asphalt, and that's temporarily is gonna hold. The weather, of course, like Leonard mentioned, tends to break down that asphalt, and you see a lot of patches that the asphalt's broken down, and it's basically runoff throughout the streets. So, the concerns I get from people that are coming to me and asking is, is, what's, what's the long-range plan for addressing some of those and trying to keep on top? 'Cause I know there's a, I know there's a lot of them throughout the city.
The ones that, you know, are shallow, if they're called through, you know, two, three, four inches, you know, they can be cut out and used in hot patch. You know, you're looking at the timeline of April through August or September.
Right.
When we're at somebody else's mercy on hot asphalt, Hecker in Cherryville, North Cherryville, we've gotta kind of run a timeline and schedule on them. I haven't heard one of them start up or anything.
Do they do the prep, or do we do that?
We do.
We do? So, they just bring the hot patch? We've got it ready?
I mean, for patches, yes.
Oh, we do it all? Okay, they just supply the material?
It's not the overlays, they, we clean the streets up on the overlay and they land, or did last year.
I've had, I've had some residents in their neighborhood call about the length from opening up the pavement till it getting repaired, of being a long year, two years. When you, you know, you depend upon your hot patch, I know you've got that short window to do your repairs, is then better, like Louis said, a lot of them, you've gone to concrete, concrete's.
Utility patches that are deep, go below the brick and into the valley.
Yeah.
That's about how you can get that to stay.
Yeah, yeah, those, uh, sometimes they stay open a long time with just gravel. And then when you depend upon your hot patch, I guess that's what you're saying, that the short window there. So, is it more advantageous just to go to concrete on those patches?
Oh, no, yes, on the utility patches that are deep.
Yeah.
The ones, the ones where you're just going down to the brick, you know?
Oh.
You can't get enough depth of concrete that it's gonna just break down.
Yeah.
We go with hot patch, we go with cold patch now, through the winter, and grind that out of pans of cement. that out of Kansas City, just to get through the winter, and then we'll go back and cut them out, square them up, do the hot patch.
Yeah, it, I guess we got two types of patches, one where an overlay has come up and there's brick under it, or concrete, then we've got utility patches that, those are concrete repairs.
In the last year...
I will add that the utility department is, is, uh, the culprit of a lot of these.
Well, I thought it was a line breaking was a, if the line failed and they caused a problem.
We have a tendency to get busy repairing leaks and one, one of the bags, and then the repairs to the street aren't getting done in a timely manner, but I talked to my staff about that, so, it's gonna get better, hopefully, well, it's always gonna change.
I think last year we started, we did, we did 12, 12 of them, and then you guys picked up a few more of that?
Yes.
You did 12?
Concrete.
They were all, were they all concrete, I, I know we challenged you to pick your top 10, and you got 12 done, were they all concrete?
Yes.
That's what I thought, we did all concrete, more permanent.
There's two south of, uh, Poplar on Sixth Street.
Sixth Street?
That aren't fixed.
That's brick, right?
No.
They have gravel in them?
They were utility repairs.
Utility cuts with gravel, and there's just gravel in them?
Just gravel.
Terry's phone.
Well, so, that's the thing, is sometimes they get, they get forgotten and where they are, and so, we've been challenging both Mike and Terry to kinda coordinate, and so, I, alright, where a street cut, there, there should be taking that list, but, uh, so we don't forget, um, where they, where the street cuts were.
Yeah, we understand sometimes, uh, the events that happen, sometimes the only thing you can do, you know, on the utility side where I worked at, sometimes a repair is a temporary, you don't have the manpower available to do anything, sometimes if a pole was broke, you didn't have a crew available, you, you would tie it up, and you'd identify it, and you'd put it on the list to come back at a later date to, uh, to change it out, and, and the hope was that that list didn't get misplaced or lost or forgotten, and then the, the, the neighbor or the person of the property calls in and says, "Hey, you guys came out last winter and tied this pole up, and winter's here, and you, it's been a year, you guys haven't come back out and replaced it." So, and we, we understand, I understand that, um, but, and speaking about streets, I know this doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't really tie into it, but when we had talked to you, Terry, it's been quite a while back, I don't remember exactly what meeting it was, but when we talked about, um, making repairs, replacement of water lines, you had told me, refresh my memory, you had told me that you had identified probably the worst, the worst water lines in the system, uh, it was, some of the oldest ones were actually holding up very well, but there were others that you had identified that were in, in poor shape, that you've gone out, uh, multiple times on, on the same lines, making repairs, and, um, so I'm, I'm just asking, you've, you've identified those areas, so when we start getting into wholesale replacement of water lines, these areas have been, have been identified, and these are the ones that we're gonna go back to and start replacing, uh, those lines to cut down on, on our multiple areas where we have, uh, where we had leaks reported, is, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That is also ties in with our GIS and, and asset management, which we need to upgrade, so we can practice things better, number one, uh, but, uh, right now I have 12 years' worth of, of water line projects laid out, so, it's, it's not hard to do to identify those.
Sure. Now, when you're talking about the 12 years of projects lined out, how, how, um, how much water line will that replace in the system, 12 years?
At the top of my head, I would have to flip thirty.
Okay, I didn't know whether that would be, we would be looking at replacing, you know, 40% of the water lines within the city, or?
No.
No.
I didn't have any idea.
Probably 5%.
Okay.
I mean, what, what we talk about is looking at, at kind of an average life, I've talked with Terry, what's the average, uh, li, or age, what's the average age right now of our system, water and sewer system, uh, and, uh, what does it take to, if it's, and I su, I suspect it's fairly old, um, so what does it take in terms of dollars in line replacement to level it off, or even decrease that, that, uh, age of the system, so you don't have these leaks and repairs all the time, um, and, so that's what we're, we're kinda looking at, say Terry's got 12 years of projects out there, uh, we certainly can move those up if, you know, you, you have the funding for it, and that's one thing we did with water rates in, specifically, is to, you know, you know, get that revenue to fund those capital projects, so that's why we put together a six-year plan, uh, we're actually, uh, challenged the streets, especially looking at a, initially I wanted a 10-year plan that looked at every street, addressed it in some way, but I, just in terms of dollars, we're stretching it out 20 years, uh, looking at, you know, each street, and what does it take to, over that 20-year period, when would they be, not just maintenance, I'm not, I'm not talking potholes and stuff, I'm talking some sort of, uh, surface treatment. We're trying to do that, um, put that, that together, it's, it's not easy, but funding, of course, is, is always the issue, you have that fiscal pressure, you have the community needs, and then you wanna have the effectiveness part, are you doing it right, uh, and providing it effectively, but fiscal stress, pressure, it's always there.
Sure.
So, you try to balance it out over the long term.
On, um, on the utility side, we, they would monitor, uh, how many outages you had on a circuit, and then they'd, they'd identify your worst performing circuit, so, uh, they would go through, and they'd do a walkthrough, and that, they would identify all the potential problems with that circuit, whether it was bad poles, bad crossarms, uh, CSP transformers, did they need to be squirrel guarded, uh, uh, did we need to, uh, put fuse cutouts on some of these systems, uh, to eliminate and reduce the number of outages, and they could track it that way, and I happen to be on one of the circuits that was underperforming, and not in my neighborhood, but, but the circuit ran all the way, uh, through Independence, all the way up till the Fountain, and, and that one, they did a walkthrough, and they identified all the things that they needed to address, uh, on that particular circuit, and then they started going through with pole replacement, upgrade on transformers, put in some fuse disconnect switches, squirrel guarding the transformers, looking at if the line, if that lateral, that line that fed that series of houses, whether that was undersized, started looking at everything that was involved in it, and then started, put a plan together and started making repairs in that, on that circuit, and of course, you're talking about a, a good number of miles and a good number of wiring poles and everything associated with it, but the intent was to reduce the amount of outages on that circuit, because we were getting a lot of complaints about, why is my power continually out, you know, it's been, you know, this year I've lost power six or seven times, and it's always either this or that, so, I mean, that's, that's how, you know, we addressed it where I worked at, but they identified everything, did a walkthrough, and then started making a checklist, and started marking things off, all that they had, uh, that they needed to do, sometimes it would, it would be, uh, just updating some of the equipment, but it was a series of things, and, and the plan was to reduce the, the number of outages on that circuit, and, and then see what the results were, and then they'd go, then they'd go to the next worst circuit and work on that, and it was a process, so, um, you know, I know we've, I know we've got a work cut out for us, but, Terry, I, I appreciate your input and your information that you've given to us, so, that was, that was, um, some of my concerns I, I had about that, gentlemen, either one? Any other comments?
On, on the streets, it's, it's hard to, uh, fathom the total dollar amount of what we need, but the reality is, we don't have the money to accomplish it all, but we've gotta do a little of what we can, and then you start seeing the results, and the, uh, the impact always grows when you, you value your dollar, I see you've got, uh, North 11th for, proposed for 2019, North 11th from Mulberry to South at Catalpa, that's been needed for such a long time, it's a gravel road that, uh, is adjacent to some residential area, and I know some of the residents have, they have been complaining for some time, they were promised that that would get surfaced years ago, and now it's, it's on our schedule for 2019, and, you know, in those areas, you think you don't have the money to surface it, but if you look over the life of how much labor you've put into grading and gravel, and, and that, you know, it really is economical to look back at the streets that are still gravel, and start surfacing those as a priority, and picking your, your worst streets, uh, South 17th from Maine to Cherry, uh, I, that's, is that gonna be a mill overlay?
It's a mill overlay, yes.
And you look at the, I don't think we've ever done a traffic count, have we, on that street?
No.
But you look at, at the route, it's, uh, a good route to go from that section of west part of Independence to the college, into that neighborhood out there, there's a lot of, a lot of traffic, and that's a, a good decision for 2019.
About 30 years here, I've never seen a wind down that street, as far as resurfacing.
But there's some, uh, surface drainage issues, I think, out around the railroad tracks and in Cherry Street too, that will help by getting rid of some holes and, and laying down new asphalt.
The gravel street you mentioned, Mulberry, uh, and then there's another one, the 24th Street, uh, you may recall, several years ago, the city started a, kind of a program of paving these gravel, remaining streets that were gravel, uh, and this is kind of, we're bringing that back, so every year, we're gonna kinda, we're gonna do two this year, and, and then we've got just a block here and there, and in different parts of the city, uh, that we wanna catch up, so we'll actually eventually have them all paved over the next, uh, few years. These are two streets that we got a lot of complaints on.
And the corridor access manager funds checking in for the alley improvements, has that been done?
Aren't we, uh, aren't we meeting with KDOT, Kelly, I can't remember, it seems like we were meeting with KDOT, and that was one of the issues, we were gonna discuss with them.
We're actually having a meeting scheduled with them.
That's what I said, we have a meeting scheduled with them, that's on our list to discuss, uh, that as well.
Is that for all projects that they have coming up, or just corridor access management?
Maybe.
With KDOT?
It, it has to do with that, that one, um, project that we were having some trouble getting closed out, and also with the, the access management, and was there another item?
I think there were three items, and I think I brought that, I can't remember. There were three items, I can't remember what they were, but, uh, that we were gonna, but that was one of them.
Is that the Peter Pan geometric that we're having trouble closing out, or is that a clink?
It's a clink.
It's a clink.
Clink on pan, I'm just not talking...
Okay, it's closing out the Mill and Overlake Project 75 with Mission and Heckert, and potential clip applications to look at, and then the access management applications for the paved alleyways.
Okay.
Did we ever get information on that $80,000 change order concerning, uh, Peter Pan?
That final change order?
That final change order.
I'm not sure, do you know, Mike? We can ask about that.
Yeah, that's been a long time open, I'm sure, and it was money coming back, it seemed like it was in the bid, the quantities that were bid, actual used less, so it's money coming back to us, you're not gonna get the contractor person on that.
Uh, we can ask about that, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Gary?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I'm good.
Good, all right, um, moving along to item C.
Did you wanna go over these proposed roads?
Oh.
Do you have them mapped out, we also have estimated costs for you, if you wanna take a look at those.
Or you could just send us the costs if you want.
Okay.
Do you wanna go over the costs now, or just send?
There's a table of costs.
Let's, let's just go through them real quick, and it'll be part of the record.
Mike?
And then we'll have, we'll have a copy sent to us here, so, so we'll, people will understand that watch this, um, what we've got.
What's the estimated cost, uh, South 17th, milling, and then the asphalt cost, Laurel Eighth to 10th, milling, asphalt, uh, North 19th, Sycamore Pine, that's just an overlay, you know, water line was put in years ago, and it's supposed to be overlay, and you have North 11th, and North 24th, which goes up and around, then Mosley, back down 23rd, back to the Locust, and that's the one that I have, so, I'm sorry.
Okay, so just giving a, an overview on this, on these projects that you've mentioned, uh, South 17th, Maine to Cherry, you have milling, uh, at a cost of $53,000, from Laurel Eighth to 10th Street, you have milling cost of $29,000, which is a total of $82,000.
Right.
And then asphalt on South 17th, Maine to Cherry, you have identified that at $105,000, Laurel Eighth to 10th at $58,000, North 19th Street from Sycamore to Pine at $19,000, North 11th from Mulberry to Catalpa at $21,000, and then North, uh, 24th at $42,000, for a total of $245,000, and then you combine that with the $82,000 for milling, we're looking at a total, uh, project of, of street resurfacing, residential street resurfacing for 2019, a total of $327,000. Okay. So, that way people will know, um, where the money's going, and what the cost is, and to see if their, their neighborhood street is one of the streets that's gonna get resurfacing. Okay.
If you look at the map, we did try to, just spread it out so that we're, the, the red is showing what was done last year, she can get an idea of where those locations were as compared to what is proposed, which is shown in green, so it looks like the green is during more of the west side.
Right.
Where that looks like last year's more of the east side.
So, you'll send us this and that map, so we can keep track of, of what's done, uh, done last year, and then what's on board for this year, and then as we continue to add projects year after year, we'll start seeing that map with more colors in it.
Yeah, we have an older map, but then there was a period of time where, you know, after the recession, the resurfacing program kinda stopped there, because they didn't have funds for it, so we're, we're starting that back up with a pictometry system, which is a system that we share with the county.
Right.
Actually, that we're using to map these with.
Okay, okay, great, great, and then you'll make that, this information, you'll send it to us, to the commissioner.
Yes.
All right, all right, thank you, Kelly. All right, uh, next on the topic, item C, ADA concerns. Excuse me.
I just wanted to give you the document that David, Dave has prepared, among other city staff, and so, we're not going to go through it, just going to kind of give it to you.
Thanks, man.
And then Dave.
No, thank you.
Dave can explain it briefly, because it's not totally complete.
Yeah. Interesting. That's good to know.
That is an assessment identifying what we see as the air, referencing it back to the ADAG, and then a possible fix to the area that we've looked at. And then we've put a potential cost there. And what I would say is, this is, interacting with you guys, you may not agree with necessarily how I propose fixing it, because it's your plan, and some things you may have a different alternative. So it's there for you to look at. And we can get back together and go through it. There may be something I missed or something that, I mean, I feel like I'm turning in my term paper from college. But I think it's there.
Thesis.
Yeah, thesis. So, like Craig said, look at it, and, you know, we're open to, if you guys feel we want to get a consultant to help us, that's great, too. Just look at, see where we're at, and a lot of work's been done. So if that's the option you want to do, I think it would decrease some of our costs there. So, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, I think it'll help to look it over and then get some questions.
Yes.
Because one of the things I know some people have asked about, well, putting ramps here and you're not putting ramps there. Now, the way I understand, everyone is, can file a complaint, but a complaint has to be really based, well, they're, they can base their claim on anything, but we're only required to act if we're violating the ADA.
Right.
And I had a citizen call wondering about the ramps, and, you know, we've had the emails.
Yep.
Concerning the ramps in the.
Right.
Residential districts. And according to the ADA, a new street, altered street, or a new sidewalk.
Right.
Has to have a curb ramp.
Yes.
But you, we don't have to provide a curb ramp unless it's a new street, altered street, or a new sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, in essence, they can file a complaint, but the complaint doesn't necessarily mean that we have to.
Yeah. Yep. And like I.
Correct.
I think you saw this morning, if somebody came to us, they just moved into a neighborhood, and they're in a wheelchair, I would immediately bring that to you guys, and I'm sure you guys would act on that. But Craig's plan of a twenty-year street, trying to hit every street, then that would come into play. I agree with, yes.
Yeah, so even though they move into a neighborhood that they don't have a curb ramp, we're not forced to provide a curb ramp.
No.
Because it's not a new street.
Right.
It's a.
Yes. Yeah, I agree with you.
Not an altered street or not a new sidewalk.
And that's where I would bring it back to you and let you guys look at it, and we'd make a determination.
Now, there are some places that we've overlaid and altered a street that the curb ramps weren't put in.
Yeah.
Have you identified?
Have not identified all those, because as, you know, in Tony's emails, we've done a lot of ramps throughout this city, a lot. I think, I mean, it's just a lot of numbers. We're doing a lot this in the Phase Four. And the big concern, when I took over ADA, that came from the DOJ, is getting this transition plan in place, because that brings us protection. Somebody can file a complaint, we can immediately go to the, hey, we have a plan, we've identified that, it's out here. So I haven't done as detailed as what Tony was sending, going out and surveying all those areas yet.
Well, the, is this a transition plan, or is this just identifying issues?
It identifies the issue, Leonard. It ties it back to the ADAG. It gives a, a solution for it, and it also gives you a potential cost. And what Lacy and I are now, those columns you'll see are empty of the date of correction and fixed, because we're putting together a twenty-year plan, which I don't really want to throw out there, because once you guys look at it and you say, David, this is not what we want to do at the, this place in the park. We're not going to spend that amount of money. We can do it this way, it's cheaper. So that may affect how our timeline works. So.
Yeah.
So ultimately, when we sit down and go through all of that, then we can bring all that together, and you'll have a twenty-year plan. But we have to figure out the funding option, because in 2022, our quarter cent sales taxing.
Well, the first step is identifying the deficiencies.
Yep.
And the problems. And there's some ramps that we've installed.
That are.
That were not correct.
Yeah.
And, you know, those are.
We're going to be bringing one of those to you next week, yeah.
Yeah. Along West Main, there's quite a few.
Yes.
On the highway.
Yep.
But those are the ones that we're forced to respond to the quickest.
Right.
And then the others fall in. So, you know, the most important element of solving ADA is the audit.
Yep.
Because most transition plans can be simple, like within a facility, your transition plan, once you have identified the deficiencies, it can be that we will relocate the public to an accessible room. We will do curb service. We will, you know, it's not a large volume, it's something simple. And for employees, it can be, we'll evaluate the needs for each disabled employee.
Right.
And we will accommodate them.
Yep.
That can be, the transition plan is real simple.
Yep.
Compared to the identification of all the other elements.
Yep.
And.
And I appreciate, because you bring a lot of knowledge to it, Leonard, and your emails help, and I appreciate that, so.
I've had a problem getting ahold of Michael. He won't return my calls.
Okay.
And he said, I got ahold of Elizabeth, and she said there was an issue that Michael needed to talk to me about. So I've got to overcome and identify that.
Okay.
Because right now, I, if I consult with anybody else, I've blocked out a.
Right.
DOJ for some reason.
Well, I, I, you got, I'll give you the number I have, so.
Oh, I know.
The easiest way, I, just email him.
I called and talked to Elizabeth.
Yeah.
The first time, she refused to talk to me.
Uh-huh.
The second time I called, she wouldn't talk to me about anything, but said that Michael had an issue, he needed to talk to me, and he would call.
Right.
But that's been over a week, so.
Yeah.
But, no, the identification is our first.
Right.
Step, the transition plan. And I think maybe, when I look back at the final on the transitional plan for downtown, there was a letter at the back that Tony wrote, addressing Cross Slope.
Yeah.
And it was presented to get approval from DOJ.
Yep.
But the, the approval didn't comply with ADA standards. And I think we're getting confused with some of that. DOJ is not going to approve anything that doesn't comply. So we might need to, as we're going from this, go back to that other transitional plan and clear up some issues.
Yeah, we kind of need to pull that one into this one. I didn't do that. You'll see at the back, the 2017 one's included. And I figured those are just conversations we need to have to how we pull it in and do all that.
I think we're, we're probably best to, to look at these, and then, you know, if you go broad term.
Mm-hmm.
On a transitional plan, because really, there's, there's three phases. Your, your evaluation, your identification, your transition plan stating how you're going to accommodate it, then the next is the enactment, where, you know, if you keep them separate, they work. But like you're, you're talking about a twenty-year plan, funding, how this is going to happen, that, that implementation phase is really based upon funding.
Right.
As long as you're going forward.
Right.
And addressing them, then we can base it on funds available.
Right.
But that transitional plan is the key that, you know, I guess when this started, we had no transitional plan, and that led to the settlement agreement and the full investigation.
Yep.
The county had just completed their self-evaluation, their audit. The same inspector shows up there, and in fifteen minutes, and they had a, a basic, we'll address the employees. Here's, we've looked at the public coming in. We're addressing these issues. Fifteen minutes, they walk out.
Yep.
That plan, that it's easily understood is.
Yeah.
Is a critical phase.
Yeah.
And first, but you got to identify.
Yeah.
The areas first, and without your identification.
Yep.
You can't do a transitional plan.
That's exactly right. Exactly what the DOJ, I mean, that's word for DOJ told me two years ago.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, because it is, you know, it, it isn't like the building code that.
Right.
I can come to you as.
Yes.
Code enforcement, and.
Yeah.
We can.
Work it out.
Manipulate and work it out.
Yeah.
The, the law is the law, and that's what we're, we're set to.
Yep. I agree. Thank you.
Hey, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Before you walk away.
Yes.
This, I'm, I'm sorry to get down in the weeds like this, but when we redid the downtown sidewalks, that was fifteen years ago or something?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. So the building that's being renovated at Ninth and Main, it looks like the project stopped before it got there. Do you know, are you familiar with that? That sidewalk's in terrible shape.
Yeah, we're coming to you next week with that, or the twenty-eighth.
Great, wonderful. Just wondered, they're investing a ton of money in that building, the sidewalk's in terrible shape.
Yes, that's one we're coming to talk to you about.
All right, thank you.
Ninth and Main.
The brewery.
The brewery. Was that outside the?
No, actually, if you look at it, Leonard, in their overlay of the slopes and stuff, it goes to, on Main, it goes to Tenth.
Yeah, that's, I couldn't remember how far.
Yeah.
We went, but, yeah, that, there were some issues with that, Streetscape didn't comply with ADA, and it was required to.
Yeah.
But I don't think the Streetscape went that far. Doesn't look like it did, at least.
Yeah. I don't know why they stopped there, but that's in that, so, the settlement paperwork and stuff. So we've been working with the brewery, and we're, we got April's here. We have some meetings this week with them and bring everything to you.
Thank you.
You should see it in your packet.
Was that modified with the Streetscape?
I don't think so. Doesn't look like it. Doesn't, it doesn't match the rest of the block. It looks like they came right up to that building and stopped there in Hakers Market.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it didn't go from corner to corner down in there.
It's kind of like they just.
But no tree, there was a tree grate in there.
If the crosshairs, if the soft cut pattern isn't there, it wasn't.
And it wasn't, and there's.
Yeah, it's old concrete.
It's not there.
So, yeah, with the Streetscape, we removed curb and gutter and the sidewalk, and we milled an overlay. So the elevation of the curb and gutter could have been adjusted to eliminate.
Cross slope.
Cross slope issues.
Yep.
But it wasn't done.
Yep, I know.
The same with the parking, all that. That's where the.
Which kind of brings a question, Leonard, because you brought this up at the last meeting about, you know, the forty-five degree angle, and you have an angle that you can't overcome. Is that on those streets downtown? Is that something that it's cost prohibitive, that part for us to fix?
Well, it would have been in ninety-seven to address it then.
But now we.
The problem is where we, uh, didn't try to comply, where we took the curb and gutter out, and we had the opportunity to make changes.
So now we have to fix the street.
And address, you know, we didn't address the handicap parking.
Yeah.
Makes it tougher, because, you know, that was something I would ask DOJ, how that refers, but, you know.
I asked him, and they told him, you guys got to fix it. Kind of basically what you just said. You guys, we had to come in there, it's on you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think you're right. But when you said, when you was talking about those forty-five degree angles, and I was just thinking, man, that street's a million dollars to fix all those streets.
Yeah. And the, as far as the handicap parking, you could have worked it in at the, at the corners.
Right.
One end car, one end.
Yeah.
Van, and worked the elevation, the loading, unloading ramp out then. It, it all could have been done. And we're, you know, we've got, we've got a problem.
Yep, we do.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the solution gets more compounded. Some, just changing a little pitch would have.
Yeah.
Addressed some issues.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, the problem you have with the businesses is a responsibility to provide access. Look at that primer on the website, Primer for Small Business, Primer for Cities. It shows some solutions to those for, for each. And usually, access to the building, if the sidewalk is existing prior to ninety-two, access is of building owner's responsibility, not the city's.
Okay. This document that we have today, Craig, that you've given to the commissioners, this will be, this will be online, posted online, this document somewhere down the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Kelly is going to put it, you going to put it on the ADA page that new, Kelly? Probably?
Yeah, you get it too, then I'll get it uploaded.
Yep. Okay.
And you're noting, I just, I noticed you've got in here a draft.
Yes, I definitely want it to be draft, because it's ultimately until you guys approve it. It's, it's in a draft form, and there's, I, there's going to be changes, because, I mean, there's going to be ideas that you may not like, or the public will say, nah. I mean, that's why we need to get it out there and let everybody look at it, and.
For the survey, it should be pretty much.
Yeah, the survey is, it's just.
The transition plan.
The transition and what, you know.
And that's why you keep the transition plan general.
Yep.
And the modification comes to the implementation plan.
Yep. And that makes sense, too, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'll help explain if we identify the three steps, and that, that correction plan, plan of correction.
Right.
Is flexible, that you can move your priorities.
Exactly.
But the survey set, the transition plan statement, we are, basically, in the transition plan, you'd say, we are going to address the issues we're required.
Right.
To by law. And then you make the, the implementation flexible on financing and need.
Yeah.
Because needs can shift.
And they can. Five years from now, when that item comes up, there may be a whole new idea out there that when you architect designs it, changes everything, so.
We had a, a project adapting a dormitory, a pit stay, with elevator and one of the floors for offices, and none of the rooms complied doorway, the door clearance. We went through and prepared to change everyone, and it came back that, well, no, if you don't have a need to provide accessibility, then just make your, your statement.
Right.
You will address it on need, and, you know, save a hundred thousand dollars by doing that. But it still was in their plan that they will change the door width and remove obstacles.
All right, any other questions concerning ADA? Okay. Moving on to item D. Gentlemen, if you have any other concerns or issues that you would like to bring up, talk about, something that we could consider down the road, now's your chance. You're good, Gary?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. I don't have anything to add at this time either. We move to our favorite part of the meeting, A, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you for attending the meeting today.